The 2017-0731 special city council meeting is presented, be approved.
All in favor? Carrie.
An emotion by councilors Christian and Grandinetti resolved that this council proceed into closed session to discuss prior initially a labor relations matter. And as council was advised and the public advised by notice today, we will have an additional matter in caucus following the open meeting. And that's an item under the Companies Creditors Arrangements Act. And further be it resolved that should set closed session be adjourned, the council may reconvene in closed session to continue to discuss the same matter without the need for a further authorizing resolution.
All in favor? Carrie. Thank you. Okay, council, we're live to air here, so I just want to welcome everybody tonight and thank our media partners for reporting on and broadcasting our meeting. I'll pass the matter over to the clerk to begin the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we can now deal with declarations of pecuniary interest.
Counselor Shoemaker. I almost called you Counselor Christian again.
As much as I'd appreciate that, I think I'll stick with Shoemaker. I am declaring conflict on the EDC matter as we represent one of the entities.
Okay, thank you. Nothing else? Mr. Clerk?
Thank you. For those in the gallery and those viewing, we have an additional item that has just been circulated, and it comes out of our closed session that we were just in. We do have an appointment bylaw regarding the appointment of a new fire chief. I have the following motion by councilors Christian and Krampodich. Resolve that bylaw 2017-159, being a bylaw to appoint Peter Johnson as fire chief and to repeal bylaw 2014-246, be passed this 31st day of July 2017.
Mr. CAO, I can let you start on this.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, and to council and to the community at large. We're very pleased to be able to announce today Mr. Johnson as if through the bylaw, being the new chief for Sault Ste. Marie. Mr. Johnson brings a tremendous wealth of experience. He's got 24 years of experience, much of which is in suppression, but he also has other credentials that he's brought forward. There was a review committee that was comprised of the CAO, the mayor, Counselor Christian, and two representatives from the HR department internal to the city that were part of the evaluation team. And Mr. Johnson scored extremely high and was the recommended candidate, and council has now identified them, and this bylaw allows us to appoint him to the role. We really, again, are looking forward to Mr. Johnson's acting, or not acting, but being in the role of the fire chief and for what contributions he's going to be giving to the Sault Ste. Marie. And we're looking forward to working with him going forward. One final piece I would like to give is a thank you to Mr. Paul Malosovich, who acted as the chief during the process that was undertaken to do the search for the fire chief. So, welcome aboard, Peter. Thank you very much, and look forward to working with you.
We still have to vote. We have to vote. So, before we vote, just to let Peter know, we'll give you a chance to say a word or two after if you like, but we'd like to recognize that Peter's wife and Peter's son are here with us tonight, because this certainly is a big moment. So, council, you already asked all your questions, but if you have any other questions you want to ask publicly, we can do that now. Seeing none, I just wanted to express our complete confidence in you, Chief, from mayor and council. We think you'll do a tremendous job, and we told council that we're going to have you back in the fall so you can walk them through your vision for the fire services. And we look forward to working with you, and you will have our full confidence and our full support. All in favor? Carrie unanimously.
So, Paul, thank you very much for your support over the last few months. And Chief, would you like to say a few words?
I'd like to thank the Fire Chief Selection Committee for their dedication to the process. I know it was lengthy, but I appreciate your diligence. I'm honored and I'm grateful for this position. And I'd like to thank my family for being here, and they've been a big support for me, and I appreciate that very much. And I'd like to thank my parents as well for instilling work ethic and perseverance in me, and their sacrifices that provided this for me. And I look forward to working with everybody in council, and we'll get together. I'd like to reach out to you guys in the next couple of weeks and set up some meetings with you and introduce myself and sit down in a little more informal session, and you can get to know me and my vision. And I look forward to this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Chief, you're going to be sitting through lots of council meetings. You don't have to sit through the rest of this one if you don't want to. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, under agenda item four, we have a street closure request. Motion by councilors Butland and Grandinetti. Resolve that bylaw 2017-158, being a bylaw to permit the temporary closing of Albion Street from Chapel Avenue to Albion Street on August 17, 2017, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. to facilitate the Ontario Work Street Party, be passed and open council this 31st day of July 2017.
All in favor? Carrie.
Counsel, our main item tonight is item five, economic development review. We have a report from the deputy CAO on your agenda, and a motion by councilors Butland and Krampodich. Resolve that the report of the deputy CAO regarding economic development be received, and further that council authorize staff to negotiate terms of a new memorandum of understanding with the Sault Ste. Marie Economic Development Corporation and the Sault Ste. Marie Innovation Center, based on a revised funding level of $1,204,166 for the EDC and $277,890 for the Innovation Center. And further, that council authorize staff to begin discussions with funding organizations to seek support for the implementation of the recommendations of the Community Adjustment Committee report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Vered, did you want to begin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To preface the report, I just wanted to make a few comments that talks a little bit about the process that we undertook and how we came to the recommendation to council. The economic development review process that was initiated by city council led to an in-depth review of our economic development efforts and the organizations currently charged to carry out economic development on behalf of the city. We're pleased to return tonight with a consensus option that we can present to city council that has been endorsed by both the boards of the EDC and the Innovation Center. Many of the comments that council made in the initial presentation by MDB Insight had asked that we take a measured approach and move forward carefully and cautiously in our discussion. And we worked with the board members on the Economic Development Steering Committee from the EDC and the Innovation Center. We also took into account the recommendations of the Community Adjustment Committee and our thoughts on implementing that going forward. And we use the principles from the collaboration framework, really, that were developed by the members of the two boards, and most notably, I think, that step change is required, and we need to act with some urgency in terms of improving and developing our economic development. Also, that any actions that we take should result in a stronger and enhanced economic development platform, including efficiency and value for money. But most importantly, we're looking at how do we improve the outcomes for the community. Some of the key considerations for staff included that in our discussions with the EDC and Innovation Center board, there was recognition amongst the two groups that we do have some duplication, and there were some opportunities for efficiencies. Also, we talked about the need to improve governance and the structure, a structure that would provide adequate accountability for the city of Sault Ste. Marie. Also, we have a changing role and landscape in economic development. The 2016 to 2020 corporate strategic plan adopted by council, its updated mission and vision, sets a more proactive role for the city in undertaking community development activities. The reorganization within City Hall also helps to set some of the foundation to have resources in City Hall that are looking at community development and how we take a more proactive role there. We also have the recent recommendations put forward by the Community Adjustment Committee that had a number of recommendations the city implement and undertake in order to move forward the community. And in large part, it was based on recognition and best practices and a fundamental shift in economic development, in looking at a complete approach and a four-pillar approach to economic development that includes economic growth and diversity, social equity, cultural vitality, and environmental sustainability. And this broader view of economic development requires ongoing excellent communication with partners in the community and local stakeholders to achieve success, and the city can help facilitate that. So, in terms of process, we work with the board members from both EDC and the Innovation Center to evaluate options to advance economic development. We've put forward two options for the group to consider, and the EDC board had come back with a counterproposal, if you will, and we accepted that proposal, and that's what we're putting forward to you tonight. So, as a result of the revised rules, as it indicates in the report, the funding allocation to the EDC would be reduced by $444,656, and the Innovation Center funding would continue at its current level of $277,890. I think it's important to note the EDC board is confident they'll be able to provide positive economic development results for the city with this level of funding. And the two boards have also agreed that ongoing they will explore opportunities to reduce duplication and take advantage of opportunities moving forward for items like shared administration, including a look at the incubation services over the next year and figuring out the optimal way to deliver those in the community. This consensus option provides an opportunity for the city to reallocate economic development funding to support other economic development priorities, including those suggested by the Community Adjustment Committee. And should council agree with this approach, we would negotiate a revised MOU with the EDC and the Innovation Center that will a revised MOU with the EDC and the Innovation Center that will clearly identify roles, accountabilities, and intended outcomes, and also address the city's role in governance of each organization. And we would also come back to council, anticipated at the next council meeting, with the implementation plan for the Community Adjustment Committee to present for council's input and endorsement. Along the same lines, we would also look to start discussions with our funding agencies to see how we can leverage any money that the city is putting towards the Community Adjustment Committee recommendations to give us a bigger pool of funds in order to implement those recommendations. And finally, I just wanted to conclude by recognizing the staff at the EDC and the Innovation Center. I know this process, while necessary, was a long one and certainly creates, you know, stress and uncertainty amongst staff. There's a number of really positive projects being undertaken by both those organizations. Staff are doing good work there, and we appreciate this changes difficult, and we want to acknowledge and respect the capable people in those organizations. So, moving forward, we're excited to begin a new collaborative chapter in community development and look forward to positive momentum building activities for Sault Ste. Marie as a result of these changes.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, councillor, do we have some questions? Councillor Fata?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of this seems like it's etched in stone. You've come up with a very clear figure of what you're going to reduce the funding for the EDC, but in the same token, you're saying that we're going to be looking into things like duplication of services, efficiencies, and so on. How does those items reflect on that figure that we've got right now in front of us? I mean, is that additional reduction in costs that the city will incur, or you're, just sort of explain the sort of the way things are kind of moving along here, if you can?
Yes, through you, Mayor, to councillor Fata. I would say, you know, this really represents the first phase of our activities here, and consensus that was agreed to amongst the parties. At the same time, they both recognize that, you know, going forward in future years, we're going to be examining how things are operating. So, I would see any of those changes coming in future discussions in future years as we look to optimize economic development activities.
So, down the road, we can expect to see even further reductions? Is that a fair statement?
No. No, no, it's not a fair statement. What, we've come to where we are today as a result of a lot of time and effort and conversation, and we have set pending approval funding levels for next year. But one of the principles is that the three parties, the city, the Innovation Center, and the EDC, have to continue to work together to, you know, minimize administrative costs where we can to maximize money that we're spending on economic and community development activities. So, we're not speaking beyond this year, and frankly, beyond this year will be another council, right? So, we can't say today, yeah, there will be more funding reductions in the future. What we're saying today is, we have agreed on a way forward, and part of that is to continue to work together to make sure that we're optimizing how the three parties operate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One would look at this and say, okay, we're creating these efficiencies for both organizations, and we see the EDC taking 100% of the hit. Why? Through the course of dealing with accounting, IT, and human resources, you would think that both would see some reduction in costs if there's some of that duplication is being dealt with so that it's all under one umbrella. Why would the Innovation Center see zero change?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Fata. When we went through the, you know, the review process and we looked at the opportunities for efficiencies and streamlining the organizations, at the end of the day, the Innovation Center receives $277,890 towards their operations, and the EDC received $1.7 million and has a longer history and track record there. There were some services that were being provided by the city of Sault Ste. Marie. There were some activities, such as administering the Community Development Fund that the EDC was taking on. So, those opportunities presented the opportunity to reduce the EDC budget and led to the recommendations that you see before you.
Councillor Fata, the Innovation Center receives 270 grand and pays rent. The EDC receives, you know, 1.7 roughly, and doesn't pay rent. So, there's just a big difference in the budgets.
We do have contracts with the Innovation Center that are included.
There's contracted services, but we didn't touch the contracted services.
No. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One would say, by when I say one would say, taxpayers out there might be saying, okay, we're looking at reducing the EDC by in excess of $400,000, and we're looking for someplace to spend it, as is being indicated by the Community Adjustment Committee. We're going to spend that money. Some taxpayers might say that they don't want to see that happen. They want to see it go towards costs that the city, you know, has to deal with, whether it be the exterior of this building that we are looking at. Why are we looking, is it fair to say that we're looking for a way to spend that money rather than use it towards current costs that we have to deal with already?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, councillor Fata. No, I wouldn't say we're looking a way to spend the money. I think what we have is, in looking at the entire economic development investment from the city, and we really look at it as an investment, both groups, the Innovation Center, the EDC, and city staff have recognized there's a way that we can reallocate that money to greater effect. And we know there are recommendations from the Community Adjustment Committee. We had an extensive working group with a broad section of the community provide input there, and we know there's some gaps, some things that we're not doing now that we should be doing. And by reallocating these funds, it's going to enable us to do that and have more impact with our economic development and community development dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councillor Butland?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Verre, the consultant recommended merger of the Innovation Center and EDC, correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Butland. That's correct.
Okay. And so, there was suggestion there was one, and I guess, and then there were three, rather than one or two. There are three organizations. The EDC is taking the $400,000 hit, and I think the logical place will be reduction of staff. Has those decisions been looked at already or not?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Butland. I think while some discussions have been had, really, from tonight's decision from council, we'll go back to the EDC Board, and that board will then determine how they will absorb the costs and how they'll allocate their funds internally, and any changes that are required as a result of that.
The three separate groupings now, is that a fair statement or not? I'm not even sure of it myself. Is the Community Adjustment Committee going to be the overarching economic development group, grouping, or not?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Butland. Note, the Community Adjustment Committee has now finished their mandate and their work. They've made the recommendations, completed their report, and it, as approved by council, the city staff will now be implementing the recommendations of the Community Adjustment Committee. And so, it really is the city staff working with the EDC, the Innovation Center, and other stakeholder groups to advance that platform.
Okay. That's helpful. When you say, I think the report says the city should become more involved, and you're saying city staff. Any particular staff individual, or department, or council, or a combination thereof?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Butland. The lead on the implementation will fall into my area, Community Development and Enterprise Services. That said, there's a number of recommendations when you look at items like improving downtown, recreation and culture, that, you know, span a number of city departments, and will have impact, I think, across all city staff. But the lead on the implementation will fall into my area.
Okay. EDF fund remains intact?
Councillor Butland, I think the CEO wanted to add something, and we'll continue.
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Butland, and adding to what the deputy CAO, Tom Verre, said. While city staff would be coordinating and be having oversight responsibility, the recommendations of the Community Adjustment Committee relate to all of the community. So, there's going to be within that frame, when it comes forward for council's consideration on August 21st, a number of initiatives that would be community-based, that community groups would be involved in. This includes small business. This would include the education sectors. This would include the social equity sectors, et cetera, that were all identified as within the four pillars that were put forward as part of the Community Adjustment Committee's recommendations. So, while the city would be coordinating that and be acting as the lead for it, there is going to be a significant amount of input that's going to be looked for from other groups within the community.
I appreciate that. So, I guess what that says to me and perhaps to others, then this is the beginning, really. If we're going to engage the entire community, this is going to, it's a lengthy exercise, and it's going to probably be onerous, but I read in the report, there's some urgency to this. So, how do you reconcile those two?
I think there's urgency to get organized on it. And I want to go back to an earlier comment. You said, you know, there, now there are three. There were always three, and I think one of the things that I struggled with since I became the mayor, and year over year, when I watched the funding and I kind of, you know, participated in how things operated, as the mayor of the community over the last couple of years, I know people in the general public have an expectation of me and you folks as councillors to be engaged in economic development and making an effort in that regard. And when I looked around the room as the mayor, we had no staff resources, no budgeted resources. There was no one accountable to us, and we were, besides our one appointment to the EDC Board, and our one appointment to the Innovation Center Board, fairly disconnected from how those agencies operate in the sake of economic development. And then when you go out and look at how economic development is occurring in a lot of communities, there is a much greater nexus or connection between the city itself and the Economic Development Agency. Now, you can get that one of two ways. You can get that by having your Economic Development Agency or employees part of your city, or you can get that with having strong agreements with those agencies. And one of the takeaways from the MDP report to me was, we needed to work on MOUs. And our MOUs have to be more specific on what we expect for our funding, and they also have to be more clear on what our role is going to be in economic development. And I think one of the big changes that this council has made is we've been really clear and assertive about having a role in community development. And community development goes hand in hand with economic development. They're synonymous nowadays. They're the one and the same thing to a large degree. So, this is a matter of making sure that all three of those parties, because there was always three parties, are playing a proper and productive role that's prescribed. And that was the intention and the goal that we set out to achieve, and I think we were getting close to achieving it. Now, there's more work to be done, and like any good organization and good partnership, with time, you learn and you grow and you change things that need to be changed. But to me, this is a big change for our city in that we, as in me and you, and you and you and you, are going to have a much more direct and active role now in the future community and economic development of our city and working with these partners. So, yeah, MDB said, one of the ways you achieve this is you amalgamate, you clean up the space, and you declutter the ecosystem. But if you go back and look at the tapes, when we brought that here, you guys, the council was very clear. You didn't want us to do that unless there was an appetite and a desire on all three parties to do that. So, we worked at that for quite a while, and this is where we arrived at. So, it's not ultimately maybe what the consultant recommended, but I think it goes in the direction and spirit as to what the consultant was suggesting we try and achieve.
Don't disagree, Mr. Mayor. EDF fund intact, or?
Yes.
Yes, as is?
Yep. Well, actually, I think improved, as in, you know, we, we, we're going to look to be more accountable with that money and, you know, get more kind of, staff is going to make the recommendations on how it's spent, and they'll consult with the Innovation Center and the EDC in doing that, when they have proponents or they have applicants. But right now, when you think about it, we approve something, and then very little comes back to us, right? Very little reports come back to us on how that money's being spent, what's being achieved for that money. So, we're going to restructure the economic development fund so that it's more robust and accountable, and we try and attach some accountability and reporting requirements to it. So, it won't be exactly as you, it won't be exactly as it is now, but the fund isn't decreasing at all.
I'll comment at the appropriate time. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So, I have councillor Nero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Verre, on page six, first paragraph, you state, "They are confident that we'll be able to provide positive economic development results for the city with this reduced level of funding," and refers to the $444,000. Could you speak to that a bit? I mean, when we talk about the EDC responded that they would be able to still provide positive economic development results, does that mean just as positive as they have been for the last five years? Are they going to be positive, but they can't reach the goals that they had in the last five years? What does that really mean?
We'll turn to the author of the report, because he wrote it. Mr. Verre?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Nero. Through the discussions and the efficiencies that were developed and the roles that we clarified that we're expecting the different groups to perform, that's really where the comment comes from. And I know it will be important to council to know that we still have a functioning economic development corporation, and they'll still be able to perform the roles that they have been in the past. And we feel that with the solutions that we've come up with and the new approach, that they will still be able to do that. So, they will be as successful as they have been in the past. In fact, we're hoping, working together collaboratively with the city, with the Innovation Center, with other stakeholders, they can be more successful in their approach going forward.
So, I guess, would it be fair to say that the reduction of the $444,000 doesn't come directly from working on economic development itself, touching base with possible economic development entrepreneurs and things like that, those kinds of things? Is it strictly a staffing, or is it going to impact results at all?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Nero. Yes, the staff at the EDC will still be working with entrepreneurs that are coming through. They'll still be working with businesses existing in Sault Ste. Marie and helping them expand, and they'll still be working with attracting companies to locate in Sault Ste. Marie. So, all those functions will still continue in this new model.
At the end of the day, they'll be able to do this year in 2017 with that reduction in funding pretty much the same as they did in 2016.
I think from our perspective, councillor Nero, the important part is the proposal that came back from the EDC Board said, look, we can manage with this funding level to provide the services you're looking to us to provide. We didn't then say to them, well, beyond saying, these are the areas we would like you to provide services in, we didn't then say to them, give us all the details of what you're going to do and how you're going to do it at this point. We want your approval, and then we're going to go back and negotiate MOUs. But the board proposal came back, came back with the indication that they were satisfied that they could provide the services we were looking for for that funding level. But we didn't then drill down and say, well, how are you going to do that?
And we would do that, I guess, from what you suggested, through the MOU. We'd be more specific.
If council approves us going in this direction, we're going to sit down, the CEO and the deputy CEO will sit down, and we will renegotiate the MOUs and bring those, we're hopeful, back to council in early fall for council's approval.
Okay. Which would be the substance of what the EDC is going to be.
Yes. Which every one of us is going to do. All three parties would be very specified and enumerated, accountabilities and responsibilities.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think councillor Nero kind of touched on this, so I'm just going to ask the question a little differently, I guess. It says here that the working groups saw opportunities to create synergies by looking at the provision of back office support functions such as HR, IT, and accounting services. Through you to Mr. Verre, of the $400,000, how much of it could be attributed to eliminating duplication? In other words, you're basically adjusting staffing levels for the $400,000. It sounds like we've got duplication in those areas. It sounds like we don't. It sounds like we've got duplication in those areas, it sounds like we don't need both, it sounds like we're going to make some adjustments, it sounds to me like the savings would come from that area. Is that a fair statement?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Christian. I do have to leave it somewhat to the EDC board to finalize that, but at the end of the day, I know in our discussion, some of that savings does come from those items you've mentioned.
Thank you. Under the city's rule on economic development, I'm quoting from here as well, "Developing infrastructure but also ensuring excellent service delivery, including elimination of barriers to business and streamlining processes." I firmly believe, as reported in this document, and it's been talked about before, city council and city hall has ownership in this process, very important ownership in this process. Does that mean that we'll be looking at departments within city hall that deal directly, that interface with business and possible business development, to find ways to improve the experience for potential investors? For instance, planning, et cetera, are they all going to be part of the talks?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Christian. Yes, absolutely. I think there's a number of initiatives within city hall that we can take to improve and streamline the interface that the business has with us. And I think that's something that the mayor touched on, really, looking at accountability agreements, those accountability agreements also go both ways. So there's some roles that the city of Sault Ste. Marie has to perform and perform well in order to help our economic development partners deliver for the community.
Agreed. I'll save my comments to all of you.
Okay, so councillor Hollingsworth.
Thank you. Good question, councillor Christian, with regards to the other departments making it more business-friendly. Excellent question. My question is, for clarification, to deputy, Mr. Ver, so just clarify again, I know that we're going to be looking at the MOUs for the EDC. Did I hear correctly that we'll be renegotiating the MOUs for the EDC and renegotiating the MOUs for the Innovation Centre?
Yes.
Correct. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth, that is correct. Both organizations would have updated MOUs.
Okay. And of course, both updated ones will be presented to us in the fall.
Correct.
Okay. Couple other questions. Going back to the Innovation Centre, in your opinion, Mr. Ver, is there not some duplication there? Do they not also have accounting, bookkeeping areas that we, as a city, can help them with so we can reduce duplication there as well? And IT and so forth?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth. Both organizations have accounting departments and roles that perform those functions and IT. And so those are some of the areas that we are looking at going forward as we continue the discussions with the two organizations on opportunities to, you know, provide efficiencies and make sure we're getting the biggest bang for our buck.
Okay. A few other questions. Currently, I was under the impression that the EDC has already started to become more efficient by allowing the city to take over some responsibilities. So going back to the Innovation Centre, can you see, because there could be some duplication, can you see some more savings from the Innovation Centre where it could impact the amount of money that we give to the Innovation Centre in the future?
Through you to councillor Hollingsworth. I think it's too early to say that at this time. At the end of the day, you know, both organizations actually, Innovation Centre, we give $277,000 to, they have about a $4 million budget. And so a lot of their staff are working on funding agreements with other levels of government and other organizations in order to, in order to deliver services to the community. As well, they have the Community Geomatic Centre, which is a unique in-house resource that has IT expertise there. So, you know, those were all discussed as we looked at the organizations and looked at opportunities for efficiencies and taken into account. But as indicated, both boards said, you know, "This is a discussion we need to have ongoing, and we need to be open and look for opportunities going forward should they arise."
Okay. And two other questions to finish off. Basically, I, we all hope that this goes through tonight, but hypothetically, if it doesn't go through tonight, it sounds like the savings may go again towards the Community Adjustment Plan. And if this doesn't go through, we'll have to look for some other sources to help with the Community Adjustment Plan. Or have you already identified potential other areas?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth. Correct. We know the recommendations are there from the Community Adjustment Committee and staff. We started to think about how we could implement those, and we know there are some resources that are going to be required to implement those recommendations. We don't have any other sources right now identified that would be able to go towards the implementation of those recommendations.
Okay. And, actually, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hoopinett.
Thank you. Mayor, through you, to Mr. Ver. My question is about the MOUs that will be presented to council in the fall. You will have recommendations on there. If there's something that isn't on there that one of us as councillors think could be on there, how will that be handled? Would you take our recommendation and revise the MOUs, or exactly, would that work?
If I can answer, I would suggest councillor Hoopinett in that if any councillors have specific concerns, that they meet with city staff prior to or over the next short period so city staff can take into consideration those concerns as they negotiate these documents. We don't want to negotiate the documents and then bring the documents here and then have to renegotiate the documents. So maybe in the meantime, if you have specific things you're concerned about, you can put them on staff's radar. And as staff negotiates the document, they can be sensitive to those concerns.
Oh, that's great. Okay, well, the one that really stands out, I think, is the number of councillors that are on the board. I think it's important that we do have better representation. So that's just one that stands out. So that clears out the process. Thank you.
Okay. So any other questions? Is it a comment or a question?
I have a question. I was going to ask it just before the vote, but if we're voting for this now, we're going to vote for the reduction. That's the primary thing we're voting for. Is that not correct?
No. You're voting, it just says the motion reads, councillor Fatt.
Yeah. But what I'm trying to understand here is that a lot of this is, well, we're going to work on it in the future. So just vote for this, and we're going to make that reduction, and then we'll work on the efficiencies and the ways that we're going to find better, even more efficient ways to operate. So we're just throwing, this is thrown in as an extra. So we're voting to reduce the EDC funding, and then we'll work on other things along the way here. And we're saying, go ahead.
You're voting on the motion as it's presented to you.
Yeah. It just seems a little vague, is what I'm trying to say, Mr. Mayor.
I apologize, councillor Fatt. Every other councillor I've talked to thought the report was really quite clear and specific.
Well, I don't agree.
Okay. Okay, so you've had your comments, so we're at comments now.
Comments.
Well, why don't you just continue then? You can finish your comments then.
What, if I may just...
You may just do it.
I may just, you know, we know that assessments are down. We know that there's a lack of development in Sault Ste. Marie. There's a lack of assessment increases. There's a lot of negatives going out there that we listen to, and I'm sure you do too, Mr. Mayor. People tell me that we're starting to look a lot more like Elliott Lake. Lot of these negative feelings out there are part and parcel of what's going on in Sault Ste. Marie. Is the population really 73,000? Is it closer to 65? People have a negative impression in Sault Ste. Marie, and some of that, sadly, you have to say this, Mayor, but it falls on our shoulders. Because when they say that, they're saying, "This council is doing nothing." They seem to spend more time patting themselves on the back than we are getting things done. But we, as a council, obviously, we have relied on the EDC over the years to bring things to Sault Ste. Marie. And I'm not talking about things like, okay, we assist businesses to keep running, and that's fine, all that is fine. But bringing new businesses to Sault Ste. Marie has been something that we really haven't seen much of. And it's frustrating, Mr. Mayor. It's just frustrating. For my first term, all I ever heard was, "Well, they brought call centers to Sault Ste. Marie." That's all we ever heard about back then. The catchword was call centers. You know, this item that we're dealing with right now with the Ring of Fire, I think a lot of people, and I think the EDC should be hanging their hat on this, that that is a very essential item, that we are all here expecting to see some positive feedback from this. But the problem, Mr. Mayor, is that the EDC has been taking a beating since I've been on council. And in a sense, I mean, people, and I'm talking about business people too, I'm not talking just about ordinary people, my neighbor or whatever, I'm talking about, if business people in Sault Ste. Marie don't have confidence in the EDC over these past several years, then something must not be working. And I have concerns about that as a councillor, but also as a taxpayer. It's frustrating to see that people don't have faith in what we've been doing to this point. So we decide that, well, we're going to slash their funding, people will be happy about that. Well, that's not really the point here. The point is that we're saying to you, "You haven't done your job very well, so we're just going to cut your funding." This is a frustrating process that we're going through, Mr. Mayor. And I think that people out there are just not happy, and it just, I just have to share that with you, Mr. Mayor.
So we have councillor Butland. You're next.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a negative perception of Sault Ste. Marie, and the more we talk of negativity, we just add to the, if in fact it's out there, and that is unfortunate, that should not be our role. I'm not going to be critical of this report. I'm simply not sure. And usually I have, I think, some definite views on, this is going to be very positive, it's going to be negative. I'm just not sure. The proof will be in the pudding on this one. There's been a lot of time, a lot of effort, putting the study together, not the study, but the recommendation. So it remains to be seen. And I'm hoping it's not just about $400,000. EDC and SMIC and the Community Adjustment Committee will require monies. And it's not a reduction of monies, it's going to be the end-all and be-all of this exercise. In fact, they may require more monies. But right now, we're dealing with the report as is. And I don't think it's all that dramatic, to be very truthful, the way I see it. There's a lot of verbiage there, and it's not all that dramatic, it's not all that different from what we see in the past. I certainly endorsed the report, the four pillars. I said, "Yeah, this is good." But I think the urgency still must be there. And council, the buck, you know, we can say, "Well, staff's responsible and planning" and so on and so forth, but the buck should stop here. And I'm hesitant to say that, because of a visit of a daughter today who's involved in research, I finally got upstairs to have a personal visit with the Innovation Centre. Extremely successful folks, between 40 and 50 people are working up there. So it was said already, we give them 270, and their budget is $4 to $5 million. So these are highly skilled people, people that are doing very, very good work, and it is a model for innovation centres across Ontario. And they've gotten awards for doing that. So it's not, as long as I've been around, EDC has been a whipping boy or whipping girl forever. They're not doing their job, they just are not successful. I don't buy that. When was the last time you spoke to some of the folks downstairs and say, "What are you doing? What are the ones that are on the irons in the fire right now?" And it's more than a noront. If the buck is going to stop here, and we're going to be more involved in decision-making, we have to know what's going on. So please, reach out, talk to these people and see. And the experience says or shows, you can have 20 irons in the fire and you have one success, that's about it. That's about it. It's a very slow, tedious process. So I endorse what's before us, and as I say, the proof remains to be seen, but let's, yeah, let's put some urgency to this exercise, but don't say, "Okay, you've reduced 400,000 people." I think the only way, the only, the reduction has to come in people. Going to deliver less service? We're going to get rid of duplication? No, somebody's going to get hurt in this exercise. And the morale, the uncertainty that we pervaded this whole exercise is very difficult for people to deal with. So let's put on a positive face and say, "This is going to be successful, and I and you and everybody's going to be involved in this. Let's move this forward." So thanks for the report. It's been, it's long, and I know there's been a lot of involvement, and I certainly endorse it. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Butland. So I have councillor Christian and councillor Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too endorse the report. It's funny, because when I read this, and I don't want to seem callous, and the $400,000 is going to impact the Economic Development Corporation, but I, in some way, in some way. I know that the board is putting on a brave face, and I appreciate that, and I still think that they can do a good job. But when I look at this report, I include it with the Community Adjustment Committee's report, and I see an overriding strategy that this is part of. And I've said all along that our community is in competition with every other community in Northern Ontario, every other community in Ontario, Canada, North America, the world. Status quo cannot stand. I am a positive person, and I believe that regardless of whether we have been extremely successful with economic development or not, looking at how we do things is a healthy process. And so I look at this and I say, "Okay, I get the high-level theory here, and I think that we can move forward in a positive way." It's nice to hear that all three agencies, including the city, are to work together. There's a lot of work to do, I know that. I like the fact that it's built into the CAC. That's important. Said from the beginning, our community has its challenges and we need to pull together. It's not just in this aspect of city operation, it's in everything. It's in the way we communicate, it's the way we interact with the community, it's the way the community interacts with us. We all need to be pulling in the same direction, and I think this report begins to get us in that direction. What I get from the report is that there has been some work done in isolation. It wasn't done intentionally, I don't think, but I think that groups were working independently, and sometimes that's not a good thing. So what I'm saying is, I think this is, although it's going to be an adjustment for some, and I don't want to downplay that, I do think the exercise is an important one. Our funding for economic development is, from what I can tell, is fairly generous when you compare us to other communities. So if we can find some synergies, that's our responsibility as a council and as a city operation. It's not fun looking at possible job reductions or any of that stuff without getting into specifics. It's not fun, but it is our responsibility. We're spending taxpayer dollars, and we simply want to make sure that everybody, as it states in the report, is getting the best value for their dollar. But the devil, I agree with councillor Butland, the devil is in the details, and it's the MOUs that are going to make the difference. I had plenty of questions about some of the comments that were made in the report, but tonight, and questions, quite frankly, but those questions have to be reserved for later meetings when we get into specifics. All my questions related to specifics, so I'm going to hold off on that. But I do caution that we need to be able to move this entire process, this entire grouping of people in one direction. And whether we want to admit it or not, it boils down to a couple of things. If you want to talk about economic growth and community vitality, it's job creations, business development, tax levy increase. It's that simple. We can dance around all the other stuff about attending conventions and doing all this other stuff, doesn't mean anything. It means something to the internal operations of the organizations, but the community is concerned about those three areas, fairly or unfairly. So I hope that once we get into the details, those types of things will become made clearer to council so that we can make a confident decision going forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's two key messages that are takeaways this evening, as far as I'm concerned, that I really want to ensure that the public hear. $444,000 is not being removed from economic development in this community. It's being redirected to the newly developing role... It's being redirected to the newly developing role of local economic development, and that's called the city. Quite frankly, city council has, has to leave the bleachers and get on the playing field. That's the bottom line. I am gonna take a few moments, Mr. Mayor, it won't take any longer than any of my co-councillors have, but I want to put this in a context at a higher level. I was on staff for 14 years, I was on the board for eight years, I have 22 years with the economic development, so I think I know a little bit about what I'm about to say. And I really wanna provide this context, please, if you'll allow me. Local economic development in Canada has evolved. It virtually began in the '30s. From the '30s to the '60s, economic development was smokestack chasing. That's how it was defined. We lived that here in Sault Ste. Marie. We know fully what smokestack chasing means in Sault Ste. Marie. The second phase, in the '70s to the '90s, was small business development focus. That's when you saw a whole lot of support for business startup. A plethora of business start programs evolved and emerged. My former wardmate, Terry Sheehan, was our small business startup manager at the EDC in some of the years when I was there, going back a lot of years. And in Phase Three, certainly into the early '90s, it was a broader base in the whole private-public partnership thing emerged. And then in Phase Four, the community economic development became the talk. And local economic development grew in significance, and efforts were increasingly directed at that holistic approach to stress the importance of the balance between economic development and quality of life. And then Phase Five, the local economic development, 2000s to present, today, in most municipalities, local economic development is an approach that recognizes the economic environment, social well-being, that they're independent, interdependent, excuse me, and that they, local economic development programs necessarily have to be multi-dimensional. And a critical piece, I don't want anyone to miss this, the challenges of balancing these interests are complex, they're ever-changing, but to be effective, solutions must be rooted in local knowledge led by local citizens. And that's the paradigm shift that we're making here tonight. The whole Community Action Committee, the whole strategy, the shift, that's what we are doing tonight, folks. We are leading-edge shifting, we're moving with the evolution of economic development for this community, and it's absolutely critical that we do it. We are not abandoning $444,000. And by the way, I will say, there are two key staff who retired at the end of June, who had been there 27 and 30 years. There's about more than a generous third of that $444,000 gone, okay? So, I won't go further down that road. I do want to, there, there's a lot of information that I'd love, I'd love to go through, but I'm gonna zero in on a couple of things, Mr. Mayor, and, and try to wrap this up. Strong local leadership with a strong community vision is key. Local leadership is essential to local economic development, and leadership doesn't imply one leader, but engagement of an array of community-minded people. And quite frankly, I've been on council 11-plus years, and we have never been out of those bleachers on the playing field like we need to do now, and like we have done through the Community Action Plan. The greater the community commitment to the process, the more effective the effort will be. Transparency requires inclusiveness, open communication, and ready access by individual citizens to be in on the local economic development effort. So the final thoughts, and it's taken from a document that I really encourage all of council and the community to read, and I'm gonna send the link to all of you as council, it was done by FCM. Are we a member, Steve? It's a policy document on the evolution of economic development in Canada, and it's just 36 pages, and I kept nodding my head the more I was reading it and writing my notes, but the last sentence under the section called "Final Thought" reads, "Looking forward, we expect that local economic development will continue to gain further support in Canada as senior levels of government continue to devolve responsibilities and local municipalities take greater control over their own destinies." And folks, that's what we're doing here tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments? I'll, I'll finish up then. I was actually gonna write my comments for tonight, which you'll all know I don't think I've ever done yet in my term as mayor, and I was gonna do that because I didn't wanna miss anything because of how important I think this is. But I decided not to, I decided I would just speak as I always do, and just sincerely, and tell you what I think. But I gotta say, I have a little left to say, 'cause Counselor Christian and Counselor Butland and Counselor Myers have completely summarized my thinking, and frankly, our efforts, our collective efforts. I'm happy to hear Counselor Myers use the, the metaphor that we have to get out of the bleachers, and I'm happy to hear Counselor Christian say, "I saw a strategy here." Because that's, that's the case, Counselor Christian. And I'm glad to see Counselor Butland recognize that a lot of work has to be done with the Community Adjustment Committee, and we have to get out there, and we have to work together, because that's what's happened here. There's been a convergence of activities. And to Counselor Fatt's point, we're doing a lot, but we have to do a lot with what we have, because we can't go out there. If we don't find this money in the envelopes that we currently have at our disposal, we can't go out there and tax people more. We can't do that in our community right now. So we're looking at our assets and our abilities and our teams, and we're saying, "How can we maximize our resources?" Because here's a fact, we know where the status quo brings us. We know that. We don't know, as Counselor Butland points out, we don't know where this will bring us. The jury's still out in that respect. But we do know where we go if we keep on doing things the way we've done things for the last number of years. So it's incumbent upon us to change things up, it's incumbent upon us to try our best to engage the community, and it's incumbent upon us to use the resources that we have as efficiently as possible. So I wanna thank the EDC and the EDC's leadership, and I wanna thank the Innovation Centre and the Innovation Centre's leadership, and I wanna thank staff, because this was a very challenging process, and there was a high level of discussion and transparency and frank conversation, and I, I want to acknowledge that it's been difficult on everybody involved, including the staff of the respective agencies. But we're through it now, and we have, of course, forward. But today's day one, Counselor Butland, you're right, and it's a question of what we do with this and where we go from here. And, and Counselor Christian, we thought beyond that point, and we listened to our conversations at this council, and we work hard to get a sense of what council wants to see and what council wants to do, and then staff and I worked to try and further that. And we're gonna show you on August 21st some of the plans that we've started making to try and further that. And we will take into consideration your concerns, and we will go and negotiate the MOU so that they're consistent with getting off the bleachers and being active. So this is a tremendous, tremendously important decision, and it doesn't seem like much in its face, but it's a paradigm shift. And we have some really capable people in City Hall, some really capable people at our respective economic development agencies, and I think we can move to create some step change. And I think we're coming together as a community to do that. So I think this is really positive, and I want the community to be reassured that we are going down a specific path that is thoughtful, and we'll continue to be thoughtful, and we'll continue to work in the best interest of everybody in our community so we can create a great community to live in. So on that note, Counselor Shoemaker isn't here, so no one's gonna ask for a recorded vote, I don't think. Oh, were you? So Counselor Myers, recorded vote. So, Mr. Clerk?
Counsel, a recorded vote has been requested. Counselor Turco?
Four.
Counselor Fatt?
Four.
Counselor Christian?
Four.
Counselor Krampadech?
Four.
Counselor Hoopin?
Four.
Counselor Hollinsworth?
Four.
Counselor Grandinetti?
Four.
Counselor Nero?
Four.
Counselor Myers?
Four.
Counselor Butland?
Four.
And Mayor Progdonzano?
Four.
Motion is unanimous. Counsel, our only other item is adjournment. Counsel, motion by Counselors Christian and Grandinetti, resolved at this council, shall now adjourn.
All in favor, carry. See you in caucus, counsel.